Call to order, the meeting of the Verona Common Council for Tuesday, May 28th at 7:02 PM. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll have the rule.
Alderperson Cronin?
Present.
Alderperson Gaskell?
Here.
Alderperson Journey?
Here.
Alderperson Kemp?
Here.
Alderperson Cole?
Here.
Alderperson Posey?
Here.
Alderperson Ricky?
Here.
Alderperson Touche?
Present.
Excellent. Next, we will have public comment. If anyone from the public wishes to speak, if you could introduce yourself, that would be great.
Good evening, everyone, Mayor. My name is Chris Sellers, I'm with Veridian. Mayor, is it okay if I take just two quick minutes to just talk about item D1?
Sure.
That came from the Plan Commission. Just to give everybody a quick summary, I was unable to make it to the Plan Commission meeting, so I just wanted to talk about a few of the items related to it, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Thank you. Again, my name is Chris Sellers, I'm with Veridian Homes. We submitted the proposal on the Gus property that was reviewed by Plan Commission several weeks ago. Review, reviewed or received a few comments that are easily to address regarding the Carriage Lane product and the alleys that'll be involved, if those will be public or private, as well as shifting some park space around, and then if we could build even more units out there. All of these items are pretty easily addressable in our next submittal, and we can come to a quick resolution on. The one item that came up that I was looking for a little bit more clarification on was, we are proposing a development that has five-foot setbacks. It's something we've done in Madison, DeForest, Sun Prairie, Middleton, and Fitchburg, and we've built thousands of houses with these five-foot setbacks. And we are the, not only the developer, but the builder. We will be building all of our own houses to ensure that there won't be any drainage issues, if that's in case what the concern is with this. But the biggest thing that it's doing for us is it's creating kind of a market correction. The way we've been trending out at Cathedral Point, and this site is just across the street of Cathedral Point, is sales prices have been climbing substantially out there. In fact, last year, the average sales price was over $450,000 for our houses in Cathedral Point. If we stayed on this path with this eight-foot setback and this type of density, we're gonna be over $500,000 before you know it. So what we're trying to do out here is just create a small market correction where we can, with this plan, and I'll go on record for saying this, deliver at least 25% of our homes will be priced under $300,000. We have to deliver something affordable or attainable to first-time home buyers in this market. And everything that's been coming through lately is gonna be very nice houses where finished lots might even retail for $290,000. We're trying to deliver a house and lot for $290,000, and with this plan that we've submitted to you today with a few adjustments, we can deliver this, at least 25% of those houses will be for sale under $300,000. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. We are still in public comment. If anyone else from the public wishes to speak, now would be the time to do so. Seeing no one running up to the microphone, we will move on to item five, which is approval of the minutes from the May 13th, 2019 Common Council meeting. Questions, comments, corrections, motions?
Move approval?
Motion by Alder Cole, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Kemp. Last chance for corrections. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes from the May 13th, 2019 Common Council meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And the minutes are approved. Next up, we have item six, Mayor's Business. I got nothing for that. We are on item seven, Announcements. Anyone from the council have any announcements? Seeing no hands, we will move on to item eight, Administrator's Report. Mr. Sayer.
Thank you, I have a few items tonight. First item is staff met with the DNR and Snowmobile Club on May 20th to continue our conversations about paving portions of the trail. Those conversations are ongoing, and we have a future meeting with both the DNR, Snowmobile Club, and the School District in June to kind of continue that conversation. They are progressing at least positively in my mind, but nothing to fully report at this point. Assessor letters went out this past week. They are setting up walkthroughs through properties for people who have built houses in 2018 or made improvements. More importantly, for security purposes, the, anyone coming into your house doing assessments will have a photo identification tag and driving a red fleet vehicle that is gonna be marked with the company name on the vehicle. So if you see those around town, that's what they're doing. We did complete the plantings downtown for the planting beds. The baskets on East Roan Avenue have been installed, and also the banners along East Roan Avenue have also been installed. If you haven't seen those, I would encourage you to check it out. On June 1st, the Dane County Chapter, the Ice Age Trail Alliance is hosting a hike-a-thon along the Ice Age Trail. There is a five and 20-mile hike option. Registration is required, and just as a reminder, the city is an Ice Age Trail community, so this is an event that's through our community, and we recognize that as an important resource. June 2nd through 9th is Bike Week in Wisconsin. Many local businesses in Verona are offering discounts during that week, so I would encourage you to check those out online and patronize one of the local businesses. And finally, we did receive 25 applicants for the Senior Center Director position. 12 of those candidates will be receiving a phone interview this week, and we'll be involving the Chair of the Personnel and the Senior Services Committee to assist with the interviews once that applicant pool is kind of taken down to a more manageable number. If anyone has any interest in participating in that, let myself know, or Human Resources Coordinator. And those are the updates I have tonight.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Sayer? Seeing none, we will move on to item nine, Engineer's Report. Mr. Mumpas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just an update from a couple weeks ago. The Well 6 Pumping Station, the contractors got the 22-inch casing installed to 350 feet, which is the design depth. The grouting has been completed, as well as the alignment, and they'll be working to begin the lower drill. I just cut out. City staff and AECOM sent revisions back to JSD on the transportation project for the high school, and we'll be working with them over the next week to finish up those revisions and hopefully come to a resolution on a few of the items and be able to issue permits. Construction on County Trunk M, north of the city, the traffic's been shifted to the new pavement to allow for the additional roadwork and the utility work. The chip and seal contract that was awarded earlier this spring was supposed to start today, but the rain has pushed that off, but that is mostly on the north side of the city, the Gateway subdivision. From Gateway, from Hemlock to County M, Enterprise Drive from Cross Country, Cross Country from Tamarack to Enterprise, Prairie Oaks, and from Enterprise to PB, or from M, and then Old PB on the southeast side from Forest View to 151, the interchange there. And lastly, there is a local officials meeting on May 30th from 4:00 to 5:00 to discuss the upcoming reconstruction on Highway 69 from County D to Valley Road, and that project is scheduled to begin in 2022.
Thank you. Any questions on the Engineers' Report? Alder Cronin.
I don't know that it was necessarily on the report, but Fireman's Park, what's the progress on that? And do we have a date for when we anticipate it being ready to be used?
I do not have a date that it will be ready for use. The work continues, obviously, they're struggling with the weather, just like everybody else. They're working on finishing up the building. You can see the work along Bruce Street with the path and the clearing and grubbing there. They're still waiting for some electrical pieces, the poles and stuff, to be delivered for, to complete the installation, and they're working on the splash pad.
Alder Ricky?
My understanding is that even though the work might not be completely finished, it still plans to be open on June 19th.
Any other questions on the, Alder Gaskell?
Just looking at the website for Fireman's Park, it's still got 2018 information, so if we update it to 2019, maybe we can also put some information about construction and progress.
Sounds good. Any other questions on the Engineers' Report? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 10, Committees' Report. Committee Reports. First up is Finance Committee, Alder Kemp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to start by making a motion regarding the payment of the bills in the amount of $495,406.61.
Motion by Alder Kemp, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Cronin, Alder Kemp.
Okay, for the sake of discussion, only a couple things here. First of all, we have a payment amount of $85,511.41 for all of the US Bank credit cards for the city. Also, there's a payment, again, for Verona's share of the County Trunk M construction in the amount of $113,967.99.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of paying the bills in the amount specified, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Anything further, Alder Kemp?
Nothing further, thank you.
Thank you. Next we'll move on to 10B, Public Safety and Welfare Committee, Alder Ricky.
Thank you, under item 10B1, I make a motion to approve a special event permit for Hometown Days on Thursday through Sunday, May 30th through June 2nd, 2019.
Motion by Alder Ricky, is there a second?
Second.
I'm gonna say seconded by Alder Cole, Alder Ricky?
Thank you, Hometown Days will again be located at Festival Park located behind City Hall. The general layout of the festival is consistent with last year. Thursday night activities include a laser show, trivia tournament, food trucks, and a beer tent with the DJ. Fireworks will be held on Friday night. Other weekend activities include pony rides, a petting zoo, the Hometown Hustle 5K Run Walk, live music, food stands, carnival rides, the Hometown Rumble Car Show, and the Hometown Days Parade. This application includes all event-related activities, including the Hometown Rumble Car Show, Hometown Hustle 5K Run Walk, and Hometown Days Parade.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting a special event permit for Lee Jordan of the Verona Area Chamber of Commerce for the Hometown Days Event on Thursday, Sunday, May 30th to June 2nd, 2019 at Festival Park, 111 Lincoln Street, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. And that motion passes, Alder Ricky?
The next motion is to approve a temporary Class B retailer's license for Hometown Days on Thursday through Sunday, May 30th through June 2nd. Lee Jordan, agent.
Motion by Alder Ricky, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Kemp. Anything to add, Alder Ricky?
This just is the approval for the temporary Class B retailer's license required for this event.
Makes sense. Any questions or comments on this motion?
I do have a little bit more.
Sure.
Information people might be interested in. The beer tent will be open Thursday through Sunday. Beer will be served in cans, there will be no draft beer. No children will be allowed in the beer tent on Thursday evening. Children age 14 and under will be allowed in the beer tent with a parent until 7:00 PM on Friday and Saturday nights, and until 5:30 PM on Sunday. There will be a Safe Ride program provided, and a licensed bartender will be on-site during all beer tent hours.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting an application for a temporary Class B retailer's license from the Verona Area Chamber of Commerce for Hometown Days Event on Thursday, May 30th through Sunday, June 2nd, 2019, at Festival Park, which is 111 Lincoln Street, Lee Jordan, agent, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. And that motion passes, Alder Ricky?
Thank you, I make a motion to approve a special event permit for the Hop House Brewing Company 4th Anniversary Party from 8:00 AM through midnight on Saturday, June 22nd, 2019.
Motion by Alder Ricky, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Cole, Alder Ricky?
Phil Hoest has applied for a special event permit for an anniversary party on Saturday, June 22nd at Hop House Brewing Company, 231 South Main Street. The business's parking lot will be used for seating, a food cart, and live music with metal barricades marking the perimeter of the parking lot area. A temporary premise description amendment is required for serving beer and wine in this area.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting the special event permit for Phil Hoest, for the Hop House Brewing Company 4th Anniversary Party on Saturday, June 22nd, 2019, from 8:00 AM to midnight, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. And that motion passes, Alder Ricky?
I make a motion to approve a temporary premise description amendment for Class C Wine License on Saturday, June 22nd, 2019 for the Hop House Brewing Company LLC, 231 South Main Street, to include the front parking lot.
Motion by Alder Ricky, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Cronin, anything to add, Alder Ricky?
This is just necessary for that Class C Wine License in the parking lot area.
Excellent. Questions or comments on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting a temporary premises description amendment for Class C Wine License on Saturday, June 22nd, 2019 for the Hop House Brewing Company LLC, 231 South Main Street, to include the front parking lot, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. And that motion passes, Alder Ricky?
Thank you, the next motion is to approve a special event permit for the Hop House Brewing Company MS fundraiser from 8:00 AM to midnight on Saturday, July 27th, 2019, contingent upon receipt of a certificate of insurance listing the city of Verona as the certificate holder.
Motion by Alder Ricky, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Kemp, Alder Ricky?
The explanation is that Phil Hoest has applied for a special event permit for a multiple sclerosis fundraiser on Saturday, July 27th, from 8:00 AM to midnight at Hop House Brewing Company. The business's parking lot will be used for seating, a food cart, and live music with metal barricades marking the perimeter, as stated before, and a temporary premise description amendment is required for serving beer and wine in this area.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions or comments on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting a temporary event, a special event permit application from Phil Hoest for the Hop House Brewing Company MS fundraiser on Saturday, July 27th, 2019, from 8:00 AM to midnight, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes, Alder Ricky?
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion for, to approve a temporary premise description amendment for Class C Wine License on Saturday, July 27th for the Hop House Brewing Company, 231 South Main Street, to include the front parking lot, contingent upon receipt of certificate of insurance listing the city of Verona as the certificate holder.
Motion by Alder Ricky, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Cole, anything to add, Alder Ricky?
Not really.
Any questions or comments on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting a temporary premises description amendment for a Class C Wine License, or for Class C Wine License on Saturday, July 27th, 2019, for the Hop House Brewing Company LLC, 231 South Main Street, to include the front parking lot with the contingency specified, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes, Alder Ricky?
Two left. This motion is to approve a special event permit for the Wisconsin Beer Run, also at 231 South Main Street, from 6:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Saturday, October 19th, 2019, contingent upon receipt of a certificate of insurance listing the city of Verona as a certificate holder.
Motion by Alder Ricky, is there a second? Seconded by Alder Cronin, I think, Alder Ricky?
So the description for this is that Phil Hoest has applied for a special event permit for the Madison Beer Run from 6:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Saturday, October 19th at Hop House Brewing Company. This event is a chip-timed 5K. 414 Events will be partnering with Hop House, which is designated as the end of the event route. Each adult event participant will be offered one free beer after completing the course. The business's parking lot will be used for seating, food cart, and live music with the metal barricades marking their perimeter. And then a temporary premise description amendment is also required for serving beer and wine in this area.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting a special event permit application from Phil Hoest for the Wisconsin Beer Run on Saturday, October 19th, 2019, from 6:00 AM to 1:00 PM with the contingency specified, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes, Alder Ricky?
Thank you, the last motion in this section is to approve a temporary premise description amendment for Class C Wine License for Saturday, October 19th, 2019, for Hop House Brewing Company, 231 South Main Street, to include the front parking lot, contingent upon receipt of certificate of insurance listing the city of Verona as a certificate holder.
Motion by Alder Ricky, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Cole, anything to add, Alder Ricky?
Just so that the front parking lot can be used for this beer run.
Great. Any questions or comments on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting a temporary premises description amendment for Class C Wine License on Saturday, October 19th, 2019, for the Hop House Brewing Company LLC, 231 South Main Street, to include the front parking lot with the contingency specified, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. And that motion passes, anything further, Alder Ricky?
That is all, thank you.
Thank you. Next we'll move on to 10C, Public Works Sewer and Water Committee, Alder Touche.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under item 10C1, I make an emotion to award a contract for Project ID 2016-123, County Highway PD Expansion from Woods Road to County Highway M, not to exceed $1,479,552.75.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Kemp, Alder Touche?
This contract, there were two bids received. The low bidder was Payne and Dolan of Fitchburg, Wisconsin, in the amount specified in the contingency. The estimate for the contingencies was actually $1,614,000. Obviously, the bid came in lower than that. The bid includes a significant reduction because of the hot mix asphalt price, the curb and gutter changes in mobilization. Payne and Dolan has provided work for the city as a subcontractor to other prime contractors in previous years' projects for the city of Verona, with most currently being in 2018. Based on past work performed in the city of Verona and reference checks public works staff, so the opinion that Payne and Dolan has the personnel, equipment, and financial assets necessary to complete this project.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of awarding the contract for Project 2016-123, County PD Expansion from Woods Road to County M, in the amount not to, the amount specified as not to exceed, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. And that motion passes, Alder Touche?
Next up, item 10C2, I make an emotion to approve an amendment number two with MSA Professional Services for Land Acquisition in regards to Project ID 2016-123, County Highway PD, Woods Road to County Highway M. Not, excuse me, not to exceed $15,000.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second? Seconded by Alder Kemp, Alder Touche?
MSA Professional Services is under contract for providing land acquisition coordination and execution for the County Highway PD Expansion Project. Amendment number two is for additional services such as extended duration of the project, the level of complexity, increased partial count negotiation time, coordination with property owners, legal counsel, and staff, and executing the final land negotiation. Contract is a timing material not to exceed, contract. The original contract value that we signed and agreed upon in 2016 was for $45,000. In 2017, we approved a $7,000 amendment, which was for relocation services that were required, and this amendment number two is for $15,000. City staff recommends approval of this contract.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of amendment number two with MSA Professional Services for Land Acquisition in regards to Project 2016-123, County PD, which is Woods Road to County M, with the not to exceed amount specified, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes, anything further from Public Works, Alder Touche?
No, no more.
Thank you. Next we'll move on to 10D, Plan Commission, Alder Gaskell?
Thank you, this item is for discussion only. It's regarding the initial concept review for a development located at the southeast corner of Range Trail and County Highway M that would contain 133 single-family homes, 20 twin-house units, and 100 multifamily units. The developer has submitted a request for an initial concept review to develop the 53 acres of land at the southeast corner of Range Trail and County Highway M. Project requires various approvals, including annexation, developer agreements, urban service area amendment, and plan approvals. Plan Commission discusses project on May 6th. Discussion from the Plan Commission included comments about the proposed side yard setbacks, traffic from the development, traffic from the development, and whether it will require traffic signals at the intersection of Range Trail and County Highway M, a desire for a larger recreation area in the development, question about would dedication towards Ice Age National Scenic Trail qualify as parkland dedication, and general positive feedback about the proposed alleys. Council's encouraged to provide feedback and recommendations to the applicant on the concept.
Thank you for that explanation. Anything to add, Mr. Sayer?
Not at this time.
Excellent. Questions, comments on the item before us? Alder Kemp, and then Alder Cole?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The developer, before, when he made his comments, stated he wanted to do a bit of a market correction and was looking to get some more affordable or workforce housing in this development because of the cost of living, or the cost of purchasing homes in the area continues to rise. I was wondering, on this map that we have before us right here, what section of the neighborhood would that be? And he said 25%, I believe, of the homes would be in that range or under that $250,000. That's the first question. Second, he also had made comments regarding the five-foot setback, and whether or not that's something that we should be adopting here. I do have some concerns about that. First, if you would, address the, you know, the housing, or the affordable housing question.
If the developer, would you like to answer that?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Alder Kemp, great question. The northern portion of the proposed site plan up there, that's gonna be, as you see, a little bit smaller lots with alleys behind them. That's where we would be building the more attainable-priced housing, is in that northern portion. We are exploring the opportunity, based on feedback we received from Plan Commission about trying to emulate some of that towards the southern portion to create more of a diverse housing mix throughout the entire project. But right now, we're very excited, just because, again, we'll have attainable-priced housing all the way up through, you know, second move-up priced housing for those residents in Cathedral Point that do want to move up into something a little more expansive, or expansive.
Thank you, and the second question was about, I know that our Public Works Director may have some concerns about snow removal and water runoff with respect to the five-foot setback. How have you dealt with that in some of the other communities to make sure that that's not an issue?
Sure, we, the snow removal usually is in the alleys, and it's kind of a back and forth with the municipality regarding if they want those alleys to be public or private. We can do either or. If they're private, then we trade an HOA, and they would hire out the snow removal companies privately, or we'd work with the city to just equip them with the right-sized plow that would remove the snow from those alleys that way. From the stormwater standpoint, again, if I was municipality and a builder or a developer was coming in and asking for five-foot setbacks, and they were gonna be different builders, I would probably say no, because what happens when you have different builders building on different lots, is it becomes a race to who can set their house up the highest, and that's what causes problems between side yards and drainage issues. What makes this development unique is that Veridian is a builder-developer. We are gonna build on every single lot, so early on in the process, we call out the top of the foundation walls to make sure that there's a slight difference between each one, to make sure that all of those drainage points are dead-on, and make sure that the water follows the drainage path that's ultimately accepted by the city. So no, so one house won't be sitting significantly higher than the neighboring house.
Okay.
And that's what we strive for with all of our developments, and that's how we were held to that standard in those other municipalities that I named. That's how they inspect all of our properties as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Anything further?
Nothing further.
Okay, Alder Cole, then me, then Alder Gaskell, then Alder Touche?
Two questions, one, I was wondering about the multifamily, if that's included in the more affordable housing range? Are you just looking at single-family homes for that?
We will just be building-
We will just be building the single-family. We'll work with an outside, we'll finish the site for multifamily, but we don't build multifamily, nor do I consider that any part of the affordable formula here. All of our product is for sale. It's for sale by owner. We will develop the multifamily site and then work with a multifamily developer slash builder who's got experience in Verona, who's highly reputable. We control the architectural review standards to make sure that it blends in with the rest of the community as well.
So that's looking at more like rentals and not condos to purchase?
Correct. That would just be rentals, and that's the goal here. So you've got, you know, everything from rentals all the way up to move-up housing throughout this planned community.
Okay. And then my other question was, I noticed that there is five private streets listed in the plan, and four of them were listed as alleyways. What's the fifth private street? Can you point that out?
Mr. Sayer?
Well, we've got the, I'm not sure if I'm on.
You're not.
Okay.
Mr. Sayer, can I, just quickly, at Plan Commission, we did have the discussion of private versus public, and consensus, I think, is that we're not doing private roads, we're not going to have them.
Okay, thank you.
That's, we're under the same understanding too, so.
Okay.
All right, me next. I'm just going to repeat some of the stuff I've already said, but one, I would like to see the potential option for some mixed-user commercial development by Range Trail and M. I think some sort of corner shop would be really good for the neighborhood. I like the idea of building more single-family homes. I think there's a lot of people who want to live in single-family homes in Verona, and I think, you know, this development could be an opportunity for them. I appreciate trying to keep costs under control, although, I mean, three hundred, a little bit under three hundred thousand isn't necessarily what we call affordable, but I mean, it does, you know, put it within reach of more people, which I think is good. I was one of the people who was asking about more green space, especially by the stormwater area by Range Trail. I'm not especially worried about the five-foot setbacks. They've been done in other communities, and I think, I think we can make it work, especially if we have a developer-builder in this, working on the project for this. I think, I would, like I said, I would like to see potentially even a few more houses. I think a lot of times when developers look at density, they think of building up, 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 you know, getting asked about four- and five-story apartment buildings, and, I don't know, I'm not always, I'm not always the biggest fan of that, and I think, you know, we could do some things with duplexes and smaller, smaller homes. And I think, from my last comment, I think the Ice Age Trail contributions would be great as parkland. Alder Gaskell, then Alder Touche.
Yes, thank you. I would just like to make the distinction between workforce housing, affordable housing, and attainable housing. I like the language being used of attainable, because really, that's what we're talking about. Workforce housing is not represented anywhere in this complex. I would not consider a three hundred thousand dollar home to be workforce housing, and even affordable for some people. So to that end, I am not a fan of the five-foot setbacks. I'd be willing to think about it more if we're really getting housing that is less than three hundred thousand dollars a starting price. I think that market-driven, yes, Verona is a more expensive place to live, but there are plenty of people who would choose to live here, and would even move up a little bit if we weren't starting at three hundred thousand dollars for every single starter home. I mean, that's a, to me, that's a really high price tag. So when we're talking about our language of this housing, I like the attainable language versus affordable, because it's all relative, and certainly, this is not workforce housing. One thing that occurred to me as well is in terms of the parkland, if we can get the open space to have some street frontage, right now, the one that's next to the stormwater pond really has no public front, so it effectively becomes a private park for people who live around that, you know, that little horseshoe. I can't read the numbers.
Yep.
Yep, so if we can get some, some of the parkland to where at least we're actually having some green space where you can run around in, where we're not doing a kettle pond, to have public frontage, that would be really helpful as well.
Okay, and they.
Excuse me, excuse me, no. If you've been asked a question, you can chime in, but otherwise.
Oh, sorry, I thought that was, okay.
Sorry. Anything further, Alder Gaskell?
I would, I would like more information. I'm having a hard time swallowing the fact that if we don't do five-foot setbacks, we cannot get a three hundred thousand dollar home. To me, that, I just, I'm not getting there with that. So any information you can provide later with that, you don't have to do it right now, I'd like to see that.
Okay. And rough math, we'd lose fifteen lots, so you can, that would increase the land bases up to the point where we couldn't build cheap enough to retail a finished house under three hundred thousand. I'd be happy to sit down with you and kind of draw up the math.
Okay, I'd appreciate that, because my understanding is that sometimes getting these houses up to six hundred and fifty, which was mentioned earlier, that some of these would be, is all interior upgrades, right? So.
Depends.
It depends, but I mean, we're, that's, to me, I have, I am, I could honestly care less if we're building houses that start at six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I know that maybe there's a very small need in Verona, and people want them, but what we really need are homes where our teachers and our people who work in our police force and our fire can actually move into Verona and live here, and right now, we don't have that. In some of our older neighborhoods, we have it, because they're older and they're smaller, but certainly not in the newer neighborhoods.
Alder Touche.
Just, I want to ask some general questions of the council, based on some of what Ms. Gaskell said. So I keep hearing workforce affordability, there are a few more terms thrown around. I kind of feel like I need them defined, you know, so I'm just asking generally as a council, can we, can we have those defined and agree upon what these terms mean? Because when developers throw them around, different council members throw them around, I think we all think of them slightly differently, and it'd be nice to have the same vocabulary on that. But, so, with that, I also agree with your comments on the green space. I think they feel very private the way they are. You know, I even look at some of these Ice Age Trail access, and it really feels like it belongs to the neighborhood and not really anyone else. So in addition to the green space around the horseshoe that Sarah described, I think, you know, it's a private park, effectively. I think that needs to be addressed. I also agree that I'm not a fan of the five-foot side setback for the yards. I would rather stick with our city standards on that. These homes are going to be expensive, from the sounds of it, from the get-go. I'd rather stay with our city standards instead of making adjustment here. But again, I really, it'd be really helpful for me to get some of this, what's affordable, what is workforce, what do all these things really mean? And I would very much appreciate it if somebody here, if we as a council can agree what they are, and then decide how we're going to get to that. So, thank you.
Mr. Sayer, would you be able to work up something? Because some of the affordability issues are community-specific, and I think we'd almost need our own Verona kind of standards.
Sure, I think the, sure, I think the intent of that, a year ago with that housing study with the CARPSY was trying to get to that point, so we can, we can kind of pull that out and see if there's anything we can glean from that to possibly get some better definitions for the council and other boards as well of what is the kind of intended definition of that? Because you're right, it does vary from a, it varies. Dane County in general, there's a set number with what Dane County is doing that we can reach out to Dane County as well. They're doing a lot of work on affordable housing as well, so we'll reach out to Dane County.
Thank you. Questions, comments? I think Alder Posey, then Alder Journey.
Thank you. So I would also agree on making more accessible the green space. When I looked at this, what I felt was crowding, and that was one thing that, now hearing and reading about the five-foot setbacks, a big concern of mine is the fact that we set that based upon the fire code, and suddenly, we're making that okay in order to get a three hundred thousand dollar home, which I agree, I don't understand why we're willing to sacrifice fire code for a home price, which is really difficult to say, because I hear residents, current residents lament about the housing prices. Residents of people who are having to move away because they can't, they've been renting and they can't afford, or they're losing their rental, whatever it might be, and they're having to move, and they can't afford a home. And that's really difficult to hear, people who've been living here for years and can't do that. And hearing those attainable homes is really something that is really kind of, it's that nice carrot out there for us, but to look at this and say, we're going to go back on a fire code in order to get there, really is something that, if we need to change the fire code, that's something we need to talk about differently. But I hear us making some of these sacrifices in developments for a different reasons, and it's something that I get concerned about, because I want us to continue to be a diverse place economically, for people to come and live, be the community that I know my neighbors love, and I'd like to see that continue, and to have developments that mirror what we already have here. And so, spreading, that would be the other piece that I really want to support, is spreading out that housing, so it's not just, oh, this is that section of more, more affordable housing, attainable housing, whatever word we're using, but saying, we're going to put this section here, let's spread it out so that it is blended within the rest of the community, because that is somewhat of what we have, and I'd like to see that continue.
Mr. Sayer, did you have something?
Yeah, just one thing with the setbacks and the fire code. The fire code is a, it's a ten-foot separation, so what they're asking for is actually the minimum fire code, which is a, basically, a ten-foot separation between the two buildings. We have our zoning ordinance, which is a different set of regulations of itself that establish kind of the building separation requirements too. So I just want to be clear that what they're asking for is still compliant with the fire code. From a strictly code standpoint, they're asking for that exemption from the zoning ordinance, which is exceeding what the minimum standard of the fire code is. So just, so I wanted to clarify that.
So is the minimum standard then the eight-foot that was in the write-up?
We have two different residential zoning districts, so the NR district, I believe that minimum setback is ten feet for a neighborhood residential district, and then we have the community residential zoning district as well, and that has a six-foot side yard setback for a single-story home, and an eight-foot side yard setback for a two-story home. So it varies a little bit, but generally, it's that six to ten feet for all single-family homes in the city.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Alder Journey.
So I would like to find out a little bit more about your idea in terms of, with the larger recreation area, and would dedication towards the IAT, the Ice Age Trail count? So does that mean that you would be using some of your property towards the Ice Age Trail?
Potentially. We've met with the representatives of Ice Age Trail to first kind of get their blessing, get their feedback on this plan, and talk through what they're looking for, and kind of the buffer areas, also the trail connections of what they're looking for. So that's how we designed this, and especially in the northern part of this map, you'll see there's big kind of kettle up there and open space, and that's more of what they're asking for. They would like that to be more of a, to be more pronounced grand entrance to the Ice Age Trail, where the parking lot currently exists on the north portion up there. So it's ongoing discussion, and eventually, it'll be Veridian, Ice Age Trail, and the city sitting down to kind of hash out what could be shifted around potentially for park credits or not.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other, Alder Ricky?
I just want to say that I am in support of more dense housing and would support the five-foot setbacks, if it means more what I call workforce housing and define as more like public service, public servants could afford to live there, so more in the, like, closer to the low two hundreds, and not as close to the three hundred thousands. And also, I'm not concerned about the zoning exemption, you know, if we can get that more affordable. And I like Alder Posey's idea of intermingling all the different types of housing stock within the neighborhood.
Further questions or comments on the development? Alder Kemp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Earlier, I believe, the developer mentioned that he would work with the city with getting the proper vehicle to help with snow removal. I'd like to, a little more detail on that and how that would actually work.
Sure, we've, we've been meeting extensively already with there, and to talk about what this, the plow situation would be, and we're getting, we've taken upon ourselves to kind of get back to him of what Madison is currently doing. We have a bunch of this type of product with these alleys all over Madison, and the city plows these with their trucks and their plows. So the first step is just getting them the information that's needed, and then we can start talking about, okay, do we allocate fees, or to help pay for this, or how, you know, is there something that needs to be done then to, outside of the typical norm for this? One other advantage is this, these alleys will be right across the street from the new Public Works facility, where the plow will have a total distance of about forty feet to, well, four hundred feet to get to these alleys. So it'll be actually a good geographical location for a test site, to see if this, how this works.
I'd like to say I'm encouraged by the plan in general. I like the diversity in the housing stock, which, and the density, I think that's something that we've, we've really needed to work on for some time. I do have a bit of a concern about the setbacks. One question I have for Mr. Sayer, if we were to approve this plan with a five-foot setback, with the idea, the notion that this is not only a developer but the builder, and in the future, a developer comes back, a different developer comes along but has multiple builders, would we as a council be able to say, hmm, that was the exception to the rule because we had one, one company working on the project?
Mr. Sayer?
Well, ultimately, at the end of the day, this will be a plan development, so we have discretion to kind of balance the requested exemption with the proposed benefits to it. So I think you're, you know, as you kind of weigh the exemption, you know, if it is towards more of that attainable housing, I mean, that's a good positive reason to grant an exemption. Would we have the ability? I think it, I think it, I think you do, I think it weakens your argument, but I think you do. I mean, we've had this request before, most recently, we've had this up in the, in the north neighborhood with Whispering Coves, and we've kind of held firm, I think it's six or eight feet that we've held on that one. So you're kind of trending down towards that minimum-type standard. There will be developers that won't want to do that type of setback, I mean, just because of the housing type, the housing product and location. So there are developers that are just going to say, no, we want some larger setbacks in there because that's the product they want. I do tend to agree that when you do have a builder and developer, when those drainage issues come up, they are easier to resolve, just because you're working with the builder as the same as the developer. So it is, it is slightly easier because you're not dealing with multiple builders. I think to Mr. Alder's point of the race to the, who gets the building in first, that is somewhat accurate, but you do have the ability, especially on a staff level here, to really kind of deal with these drainage problems as they, as they come up. Long-term, I mean, the houses are closer, people put flower beds, it does increase that long-term risk that you may have some additional issues, because as we all know, people change drainage patterns, and sometimes they just do it and don't tell anyone. So naturally, you could have some additional potential concerns long-term with it, but I think, I think you will have the ability to say no, but it's just going to make it harder, I think, in the future to say no.
Thank you.
Alder Ricky, and then Alder Gaskell?
I just want a clarification, and then an explanation. So the clarification would be about the, the fact that there would be no private roads, including the alleys, that alleys would be owned by the city, is that my understanding? Or is my understanding correct, is the question? And also, maintained by the city? So if there are any trees planted there, those would be maintained by the city as well as the snow removal? That's my first question. Maybe Mr. Jacobson can answer that.
Mr. Sayer, did you want to?
I can take that, actually. So I think the intention here is to, you'd have the, you'd have the alleyways in this location, those would be, be public, that's the direction, you know, I've heard from the Plan Commission Council. The outlot in the middle, kind of regarding the trees, I think that's probably up for discussion of, is that the association? Is that a park, or is that just more of the association, those lots maintaining that? The rest of the roads here would be public, and the only exception to that would be the parking lot for the multifamily, which is very typical of any apartment development, and that would be private.
Okay, thank you for answering that. And then my next question is related to the width of the public roads versus the alleys, as well as maybe asking Chief Coughlin, since he's here, to comment on public safety issues related to those alleys and the width of the public roads.
Mr. Sayer?
I can take part of it, and if Chief Coughlin needs to jump in, he can. So the streets themselves, the applicant is proposing a typical city street, that'd be sixty-six feet of right-of-way, thirty-six feet face-to-face, it's a standard city-street cross-section, so there's nothing, there's nothing. So, there's nothing, there's nothing unique or nothing different about that. I think the alleyways, from, I think from our standpoint, I forget if the width on that is twenty-four or twenty-six, but we haven't, twenty-six, we haven't, we haven't actually gotten into that level of detail yet. But with any of these alleyways, what we would require as part of the plating process would be to indicate those as a fire lane. That's what we've done for other type driveway alleyways before. So, it would be dedicated as an alleyway, but we probably also have it indicated as a fire lane as well. And that would give us the ability, a very clean ability to tow, and we'd also have the ability to enforce parking as well, too. So, not to say issues are going to not pop up out there, just because people can park a boat, can park a car, and block a driveway. It happens. But we'll do everything we can to kind of mitigate that as part of the design process.
Anything to add, Chief Coughlin? Anything further, Alder Ricky?
No, thank you very much.
Alder Gaskell?
Thank you. Do you have an idea for the twin homes in turn of the alley? Are they, is it an attached garage? Is it separate? I'm thinking about like driveway length from the alley to the garage in terms of snow storage. That's one thing I do have a concern with, is where are we going to push the snow to? Right now, there doesn't look to be much room, and we don't want to get stuck where we're having to haul it out.
What is, let me call my engineer for that, for the driveway width, just to confirm, or driveway length, to confirm that.
Good evening. My name is Dan Day from Denofia Cackey and Associates. Been working with Riddin for quite some time, and doing the different alley products throughout the area. The typical width of the alley product of what we've done with the alleys is twenty-six foot of right-of-way with fifteen foot of pavement interior to that. What that does is allows us then to, that tightness of the pavement allows us then to, the people don't feel like they can park there. And then the homes for the twin homes are definitely, they're attached garages to the twin homes. And they're, in most circumstances, either there is not enough driveway to park behind, so there's like a seven-foot driveway, or there's a lengthy driveway that there is twenty feet to be able to park from the garage to the alley, or to the right-of-way, so that they're off the right-of-way. From a snow storage standpoint, typically what we've seen in the alleys, in the carriage lanes, is that it's done by a single truck with a plow, front plow. And really, the only issue is having been having many problems with snow buildups on the side with the pushing of the snow. Sometimes at the end of the alley, it's just got to take it across the street to the terrace at the other end of the alley is what, what ends up happening. Can I answer your questions?
Yeah, except where I don't necessarily, there's, so there's two alleys that would have a terrace opposite the other side of the street, which would be in front of someone's home. I know this, this last year, we had a lot of snow, and we ran out of places to put it. And it got to be a problem.
The month of February is not going to us, was it?
You know, we got actually a lot of complaints that a plow would come through and end up, just by virtue of there was nowhere else for the snow to go, you know, it would dump back into someone's driveway.
Right.
And these are not alley-loaded homes with a small space. So, it's more about, can we look at the site plan, and is there a place which could serve a snow storage if it needed to be, where we could push it to? So that we're not actually getting our public works to have to bring in the trucks and dump it and take it out.
Very legitimate comment. We'll take a look at that, see what we can do with our actual version when we submit.
Yep. Further questions or comments from the council? I'll just, I want to echo the idea from Alder Gaskell about potentially having parking at the central open space. I think it would prevent it from seeming like a private park. And I know, I think we're all in agreement on private roads, but I'm just going to say again, I don't like private roads, and we should hopefully never build them. Questions or comments, or any other feedback? Alder Touche?
Yeah, I'm just trying to think creatively, and my job isn't to solve your problems. But if all of these twin, if that little circle became all twin, and is it, in a way, does it become condos? And then it's really just parking for condos behind there, and it's no longer a private road?
No, these, what we do is we make them fee simple. We don't, we want to avoid the condo tag for a number of reasons, but one is condos to, for purchasers or buyers to get a loan to buy a condo, much tougher to get, to meet loan requirements. Where if they're fee simple units, that means there's a, literally the property line goes right down the middle of the unit. It's an individual unit itself, much easier to qualify for a loan, and then also usually less money required down, to be put down, to purchase that unit. That being said, everyone still falls under the HOA. We have a very strict HOA that we'll install out here. Everybody will pay into that HOA, and that tool. Also, we've partnered with a third-party company that will, you know, make sure that everybody's adhering to the rules and restrictions that are set forth. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. I mean, so, no one's really commented on the private roads, and normally I'm one of the biggest advocates against it, but...
Yeah. Well, we can, we'll work better.
This area seems, I don't know, it seems a little bit, I don't know. I'm struggling, I'm on the fence on this one. I feel a little more open to it for some reason, whether you caught me, is it "good evening" or just?
Alder Touche?
And I didn't eat dinner either, but...
I invite you to come over to my condo development and look at our private roads. They're terrible.
Fair enough.
And they're going to stay terrible.
And I've had plenty of friends tell me their condo driveway and such are poorly maintained, and then grumble when they do get maintained. Yeah. Point taken. Thank you, Sarah.
Alder Ga, Alder Gaskell, did you have anything?
No, thank you.
Okay. Last chance for questions or comments? Seeing none, we will move on to 10E, which is Personnel Committee.
Thank you. Appreciate the feedback, decently.
Thank you.
Alder Gaskell?
Yes. Wait for the screen to come up, please. Okay, this is, first up, we've got Item 1, Discussion on Possible Action Regarding Amendments to the City Administrative Policy Number Four. Personnel policy relating to holidays. I believe there might be more on the next screen, but specifically related to holiday pay for staff, I believe.
Do we have a staff explanation?
Sure. So, the big change on here is that Martin Luther King Jr. Day has been added to the list of holidays for city staff. We've also gone through and made changes to dates that, or holidays that actually fall on set dates each year as well, too. So, we've gone through the kind of policy and made those changes to, to kind of update and reflect that. If it's not changing, we just put the date instead, the name of it instead. So, adding that as a legal holiday, typically, it would give, it would give all city employees that day off. A typical day cost to the city is approximately twenty to thirty thousand dollars per day. So, today, for example, would be in that twenty to thirty thousand dollar range of just paying city employees. There's quite a little variation there, depending on time of year, overtime, et cetera. But it's generally within that range. So, yeah, the big, the big change is adding that holiday, and then changing the ones that, the names basically, to the dates that they fall on every year. We did do some research around the area, and generally, most municipalities have between eight and ten kind of holidays for theirs. This would give us nine, so we'd fall right in the middle of kind of where that general average kind of fell. This did go to the Personnel Committee on May 17th, and they voted to recommend for approval of the policy amendment.
Thank you. Alder Gaskell, is there a motion?
Yes, there will be a motion. I recommend approval of, is it really City Administrative Policy Number Four?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion by Alder Gaskell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. Anything to add, Alder Gaskell?
No.
Alder Touche?
So, this essentially is giving everyone a point four percent pay increase? Is that a budgetary thing? I know we've added a holiday here, but that really means more pay for less work. So, I'm just, you know, want to make sure we do it right.
Mr. Sayer?
It's not a budget change. I mean, you're still paying the employees regardless of that, so it's no different than taking a vacation day, or personal day, or working that day. The salary is set kind of based upon the calendar year and the, you know, two thousand eighty hours that is worked that year. So, no, it wouldn't be an amendment because the dollar amount isn't changing. It's just how it's being allocated. So, when we do budgeting, we don't allocate based upon, we have a flat set. This is the salaries for planning, this is the salaries for public works, et cetera, et cetera. And that's how it's set. It's not broken out by what we anticipate for vacation or holiday pay itself. So, it's just a simple line item. So, no, I don't, it's not a budget amendment.
Well, I bet if you look at it as hours worked versus amount paid, amount of hours worked just went down by eight. So, therefore, the amount they are paid by the hour went up. Correct? So, I'm just, I'm going to vote for it, but it's just, it, being in management and going through this through different angles, it definitely feels like a pay increase. And I'm totally cool with it. So, again, goes back to budget, so that's all.
Alder Gaskell?
I believe it really came up just because MLK Day is a national federal paid holiday. Madison City follows it as a federal national paid holiday. So, I'm still in line with that, that it should be a paid holiday for our staff. And even in looking at the number of holidays, I was surprised to find, for instance, I think it's New Year's Eve is not necessarily, or it's not a paid holiday. New Year's Day is, but New Year's Eve is not, so you have to take that off as part of your vacation. And Mr. Sayer explained, you know, we're landing at nine, which is between eight and ten, which is the standard for Dane County. So, it's just a way to sort of, as far as I'm concerned, recognize the work that our staff do, and it's a benefit to keeping people here.
Further questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of the amendments to City Administrative Policy Number Four, personnel policy regarding, related to holidays? All those in favor of the amendment to City Administrative Policy Number Four, personnel policy, signify, signify approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And that motion passes. It's not even, that's been that long of a meeting. Alder Gaskell?
Thank you. The next item up for discussion and possible action is city administrator recruitment. The Personnel Committee met March 20th and 21st to discuss the candidates for city administrator position. Both the Personnel Committee and the department heads interviewed candidates on the 20th, and then discussed candidates on the 21st. Staff is requesting a closed session to discuss the city administrator candidates with the common council, but I do request that Mr. Weckerly give us just a brief update in open session before we move to closed session.
Sure. So, just a quick recap on overall process since we've, since I last met with the group. So, on April 29th, we invited six candidates, or sorry, we invited six candidates to interview as part of our first-round interviews on April 29th. Four candidates interviewed, and three were identified as qualified candidates to move forward to the next step of the process, which were second-round interviews. Second-round interviews were held last, last week on the 20th. Candidates, as part of that process, candidates met with two separate panels, one consisting of the mayor, members of council, and myself, and one consisting of department heads. Candidates also took part and completed two different job simulation exercises that were designed to measure job-related skills and competencies. On the 21st, that following morning, candidates were taking on a tour just throughout the, throughout the city. We showed them the various facilities. And then, a discussion was held on Tuesday night with personnel just to discuss the overall results of the interviews, have the, the two panels kind of meet together and share their overall thoughts and ideas. So, that's kind of where we are now. I think, moving forward, I can kind of get into more, a little, into a little bit more about our candidates and next steps in closed session, if that works.
Alder Gaskell?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to move into closed session, please. Common council may convene in a closed session for discussion of possible action regarding city administrator recruitment. It's authorized by Section 19 dot 85, paren 1, paren C of the Wisconsin statutes. Consider employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee subject to the jurisdiction or authority of the city of Verona. The common council may reconvene in open session to discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in the closed session.
Motion by Alder Gaskell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. This is a roll call vote.
Aye.
Alder Gaskell?
Aye.
Alder Journey?
Aye.
Alder Kemp?
Aye.
Alder Cole?
Aye.
Alder Posey?
Aye.
Alder Ricky?
Aye.
We are in closed session at 8:06.
We are in closed session at 8:06.
You're back in open session at 8:32. The council received an update and took no action. Next we'll move on to item 12, which is adjournment. A motion to adjourn would be in order. Motion by Alder Tuchet. Is there a second? Second by Alder Ricky. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And we adjourned at 8:32 PM. Thank you.